Welcome, everyone, to the August 12th, 2019 Town of Scarborough Planning Board Meeting. Could all join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't know if my mic is working. Doreen, could you give us the roll, please?
Nicholas McGee.
Here.
Rachel Hendrickson.
Here.
Roger Beely.
Here.
Robin Saunders.
Here.
Richard Duperry.
Here.
Jennifer Ladd.
Here.
Rick Minkin.
Here.
Thank you. We have the minutes for July 1st and July 22nd. I'll entertain a motion to approve those two.
So moved.
Do we have a second on those?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? So that's be unanimous, thank you. First item up tonight is ENF LLC requests a site plan amendment for 371 U.S. Route 1, Assessors Map U-39, Lot 46A. Jemelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the applicant's here this evening with minor modification to the parking area and the stormwater treatment system. Staff has suggested several minor modifications to the plans, and these have been incorporated into a draft motion after the board's consideration this evening. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Jemelle. The applicant is here and ready. Would they like to approach? Just giving us an overview of what you've got going on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Will Conway with Sebaggo Technics, representing ENF Limited Liability, doing business as Land Rover Jaguar. If I could turn your attention to the screen behind the chair. This area is to the right of the building, it's sort of shaded gray in that area. What you're looking at is a demolition plan, and that represents pavement that's been removed. And the original design had some parking that was parallel to Route 1 and extended from the right edge towards the building. At the time the site plan was drawn, the thought was that the service bay, which is the area right there, would be approached from the rear. But since that plan was drawn, the applicant had determined, as required by Land Rover International, that it has to approach from the front. So that parking area that had been planned would encroach on vehicles that stack in front of the service doors, which is shown on the diagram to my left. So what we're planning on doing is moving the parking to the right-hand edge and allowing cars to stack and then cars to circulate around to the right of the stacked vehicles. As Jemelle mentioned, it does, that area does impact a small existing stormwater pond, which will be reconfigured to accommodate the project. With that, I'll answer any questions that I may not have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Robin, do you want to take a crack at this?
I'm just wondering, is this for public comment?
It is, you're correct. If there is anyone here that is for public comment, just please approach and ask your questions direct to the chair. I'll do our best to answer them. Seeing that, I'm going to close public comment. Go ahead, Robin.
Yeah, can you, can you explain the impact to the stormwater feature and how it will be mitigated?
Yeah, so it slightly, not the bottom of the pond, but the side slope encroached into the new edge of pavement. So we're basically going to widen the outside edge to the right.
But technically, can you talk about the volume and the detention times and things like that, will that be impacted at all?
I'm not an engineer, as you know. What I can tell you is the project is a slight increase in impervious area. We submitted calculations to that effect in the proof that the pond has capacity, and the peer review engineer has signed off on that.
Okay. And I think the only other thing that I had was about the parking. It appears the proposed parking lot width needs to standard, however, there's no dimensions provided. I was thinking, this is, I guess I'm getting it confused with another project I was reviewing, but there's, there's no waivers or anything associated with the...
No, no. As Jemelle commented in his opening remarks, we need to add some dimensions to the plan, but we'll do that as a condition.
Do you have any, do you have any objection to the stat comments?
No.
I'm, I'm by the way, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I need to, a little bit of help on the, on the plan. So the vehicles will stack in, for the garage door in front.
Correct.
They'll enter from in front. Will they exit the same way?
No, they'll exit the rear.
So when they exit the rear, are they going to go around to the left of the building or circle around to the right and pass the stacked cars?
They could do either.
Do you think there's one way that's better?
Oh, I think that clockwise is a more natural tendency of drivers, so that certainly functions well.
All right, then, I would suggest that there be some sort of signage directing people out, otherwise you're going to find them splitting and some going left and some going right.
Sure.
So some sort of directional, once folks come out, that would be helpful. The other thing, I have a question on the electric charging stations. What are going to be the hours of operation?
Standard, you know, nine to five.
So they're going to be turned off when the, when the facility is closed, or...
I don't think we've thought that through. My guess would, probably the charging stations would not be on timers. They would be, you could leave a car charging overnight there if you want.
Then what's the level of charging station that's going in? Because some of the charging, the new charging stations can completely charge your car in 50 minutes. So to leave them overnight with the trickle going in kind of vitiates the...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The benefit.
I think it's up to Land Rover to manage that.
Well, it would be helpful if we knew how that was going to be managed.
Okay.
Just in case the police come along and see cars there at 12:00 at night and wonder why all of a sudden there are the cars there.
Okay.
Cars stacked up.
Yeah, we'll put a note on the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Rick.
Hi.
Hi.
Are you charging the grading, are you changing the grading at all with the changes?
Slightly, to modify that pond.
Okay. Just wanted to ask that.
Not a lot, it's very minor grading.
Yeah, it's, I, yeah, I looked at the plan, but, so everything's, as long as you change this, everything still slopes towards the pond, you're all good.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thanks for, Roger?
I have no questions other than just a comment. I want to just comment about how attractive I think the new building looks, so that's all.
It looks nice, right?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Jen?
I'm curious about, so you referenced vehicles stacking in front of that service entrance. Do you have a sense of how many that may be, or is this like where someone would come to drop off their car for work and maybe they're running in to check in with the office, that sort of thing? Or is, I'm just curious about the operations of that service entrance.
I'm not 100% sure about that. I haven't asked that question to Land Rover. I would imagine that most people will queue. If there's no vehicles in, they might just pull right in. But if there's vehicles that are approaching, they just pull in behind, get out, go talk to the attendant, they might get their keys at that point. I'm not sure.
Okay. I was just curious about whether or not that would in any way, if the stacking was long enough, put people on top of the crosswalk, which would not be ideal. But just a, just a question, I guess, back to, back to the applicant about whether or not they have, have thought about that or have a plan for sort of either shooing cars along or identifying an area not to park within, just to leave that open.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm all set.
Rick?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I think it looks great, the building, since the renovation. And I also commend you for the EV charging stations. I would agree, it'd be nice to put the level, one, two, or three, of the type of charger it is. And it would be helpful, too, at least, if you, if you found out if they were networked or non-networked. Because if they're networked, they could be used by anybody at any time, although you have, the owner has the right to shut them off if you're paying for the electricity. So doing that. And then finally, did you just double-check the photo metrics with the movement of that parking lot light to ensure that we still have the coverage you need?
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's good?
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I don't really have any further questions for you, so with that said, I do have a motion prepared, and I'll read it out now. Move to approve the site plan amendment, project titled amended site plan proposed by ENFK, I'm sorry, ENF LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebaggo Technics, dated 7/24/19, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the existing parking area on the site and modify the stormwater treatment system. The property is located within the general business B3 zoning district and a contract zone. Property is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map U-39 Lot 46A. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design on the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review, shoreline zoning, and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization, layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Conditions: One, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include (a) the parking space and aisle dimensions and signage as discussed with the planning board; (b) the limited disturbance buffer; (c) additional details of the electrical vehicle charging stations along with utilities serving them; (d) matching overall site plan and site, site plan and site plan?
Yeah, so it's the overall, which is this one?
Okay.
And then they have a zoomed-in one that didn't really correlate.
Okay, thank you.
It's a little funky.
This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall address the review comments in the memo provided by Wooden and Kern dated 8/8/19. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, the applicant will need to apply for an electrical permit through the codes department before installing the electrical vehicle charging stations on the site. That's the motion. I have a second, any discussion? All in favor? So that's be unanimous, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Michael Scammon requests a master plan review for 39 Inglesall's Drive, Assessors Map R-50, Lot 24. Jemelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project's located in the Higges Parkway and Rural Farming zoning districts. The project shares the same driveway as the existing salt pump climbing gym. So as the board may recall, the applicant was last in front of you all in June for site inventory and analysis. And this evening, the applicant's proposing to develop Phase 1 of the 43-acre property. So Phase 1 includes a 7,500-square-foot commercial building, including a restaurant. So the conceptual master plan phase is intended to generally lay out how the planned development will be developed, including the various, the proposed use of various parts of the site, the primary road network, the pedestrian network, the overall approach to stormwater management, proposed development areas, open space areas, and buffer areas, and the development standards that will apply to the overall development. The standards do allow for five-acre portions of the property to go through a separate master review, master plan review process, that's what's before you this evening. So given that the zoning standards require the project to be bicycle and pedestrian-oriented, staff has suggested a sidewalk be provided along the entire access road, and the applicant revised the one-way portion of the roundabout, so it is designed to minimize vehicular speeds on the property. Staff was also unable to locate the required buffers on the plans and any associated details for these buffers. And staff would also like to point out that the project is located in the Millbrook watershed, which has been listed by the main DEP as a threatened stream, so staff encourages the applicant to design the project to help prevent additional impacts within the watershed. And one other thing, it wasn't clear to staff if the restaurant is the only proposed use in the 7,500-foot building, square foot building, so the applicant should be sure to discuss any additional uses proposed to the building with the board. Staff is comfortable with these issues being dealt with as part of a formal site plan submission and has provided the board with a motion for your consideration this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Jemelle. The applicant, please approach. And again, we ask that you assume we've read most of the materials, so helping focus on staff comments would be greatly appreciated, and then, of course, the board, especially at a conceptual point, will have our own set of questions for you as we go along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bob Metcalfe with Mitchell and Associates, and with me tonight is Mike Scammon, the applicant, his daughter Melanie, George Workman from our office, and Matt Provenchel from Mark Mueller Architects, who will be talking about the architecture we've got on this project for you. Since the last time we were here, we made some additional changes on the master plan, had discussions with Jemelle, and going over some of the submission items for the detail on the, the application for the master planning, and we've subsequently revised that, and some of that information is obviously addressed in Jemelle's memo. Do you want me to go through a complete context location on this, or do you want to focus more on the details that came up through the review? Because I can do a formal...
I think focusing on the review aspect of this, and then the board will try and analyze.
Sure. Okay, so... So in terms of the master plan itself, and going over some of Jemelle's comments in here, the main elements we have, again, it's pedestrian-oriented. The roadway we had shown is a, more of a naturalized shoulder, of a stone dust pathway along there, but we can look at that in terms of improving it to a sidewalk. We're trying to minimize the overall influence of hard surfaces as far as pavement was concerned, and also to accommodate for some of the water quality management we were looking at for the site itself. The core of the master plan itself is, as you've seen during the site analysis phase, as well as when we met with the board for an initial review of the plan itself in terms of what the intent is for a wellness-based community. Phase 1 is for the wellness building with the restaurant, and part of our documentation we had submitted initially was that it would be a mixed use. The restaurant's only going to be one portion of this, the rest of the space would be wellness-related medical-type uses or therapy-type uses. So there is an office component in it, the actual tenants haven't been defined at this point. Mr. Scammon and his daughter are working on those elements, so it will be a mixed use, it's not entirely a restaurant-based use for the Phase 1. In terms of the one-way circulation, as Jemelle said, we had looked at addressing that. The front is really intended to be a drop-off area, so the circulation around to that loop, we're looking at pavement-type improvements that will slow traffic going down through there, and the division island we had in there, we've divided that off so that we get the two-way circulation to the left and into the parking. And part of that two-way circulation is ultimately will connect to the future phases of development, so that we're able to separate that travel corridor. In terms of the zoning for the neighborhood impact, the intent all along has been the nature of the topography on this site because of the gravel extraction operation. The site up here, it drops, I guess it doesn't go to that other screen, it doesn't, the site drops down from this boundary line, which is along the residential properties, and steps down towards the pond itself. It's almost in a terrace situation right now, so the intent is to preserve vegetation on the top of that slope, where there actually is a trail network that kind of partially goes to that area in maintaining that, and then taking advantage of the topography and being able to step that down, so from the residential use up in here, the buildings, whatever goes into this phase, we're able to step down towards the pond to provide that separation and buffering of the, of the neighborhood along that edge, and that would comply pretty much along this entire edge and here. Along this edge in here, it's fairly open, of course, it's the Gateway Apartment Complex, which actually, we didn't realize until we saw the last building going up here, that they have great views of the pond. We first started looking at this site, we didn't see that structure. So there'll be some sustained buffers that'll occur along that edge when this phase actually comes into play. The same thing in this area in here, there's a substantial amount of vegetation that's around the ponds. Since the termination of the gravel extraction operation in, I believe it was the late '70s, Mike and then his, his late father had been going through a whole reclamation of this gravel pit. And when it was started in the '60s, there was no DEP requirements in terms of mitigation and reclamation for gravel pits. So on their own, they've developed their own plan, and they've been doing that since that time in terms of management, planting vegetation to restore the area. So where this vegetation that's occurred along the edge of the ponds, it's an asset to the future development of this, and the intent is to sustain that integrity as much as we can as we move towards those other phases. We've shown the area which is in the rural farm, which is, as we had shown back during the site analysis, it has a potential to have three additional lots up in here, there are no plans right now, or, you know, conceived of at this point for any type of development up on that side, is part of what we're looking at in the master plan, but we've shown it since it's all part of the same parcel. Talked about the, the building itself and the restaurant, the Millbrook application, the watershed, also the fact that this is also within the town's aquifer protection area, which pretty much goes around the perimeter of the pond here, comes around the sides of where the proposed building is. The whole design intent is to utilize bio-retention in... The whole design intent is to utilize bio-retention in the core of the parking area. And I'll go through some of that again after I have Matt go over some of the architecture. But looking at water quality treatment on site with potential use of the pond to this side of the site with potential to deal with water quantity after treatment. So those are the things we're in the initial stages of looking at. We've submitted for pre-application with DEP for the stormwater permit. So until we actually have further discussions with DEP and try and finalize that, we'll be developing the plan, and we'll also be having the town's engineers part of that discussion with DEP. So that's our plan. The intent is, again, it's a wellness base. We're trying to be as insensitive to the environment as possible. Let's see. Regarding the conceptual site plan, the traffic analysis, actually, our traffic engineer's floating in here somewhere for another application, Randy Dutton. He's already on board to start looking at the traffic assessment for this proposed use, and we'll be providing that when we submit the site plan application for the project. The pedestrian walking path, I discussed that in terms of partially for the roadway coming in, we'll look at the sidewalk area. There are some existing trails through the site. Some of it just follows along what was the old tow roads that went around the gravel extraction that we'll be preserving. Some of that is really shown on this plan as future. It is not intended that it's all going to be done during phase one, where we've shown some pedestrian connections going around in various locations of the site. We'll be just doing some of the immediate improvements, as well as incorporating into some of the existing trail network that is there at this time. Regarding the salt pump climbing gym and the access, actually, the salt pump gym is shown on the site, the master plan. It's labeled by the owner rather than the salt pump gym. We can obviously change that and put a note on there reflecting that it's a salt pump gym, pump gym. They actually have an access easement over where the main roadway is going to come in to serve the phase one development, so that their property actually ends here. And that driveway is actually on the Totem Pond site. They come in over that and access the gym site. So that whole driveway network will be reevaluated in terms of how that configuration works for the flow of traffic coming in and out. And the question about the parking, I'm sure we will have that discussion regarding some of the parking issues that Salt Pump seems to be having, so... Again, with the proposed commercial use, we'll come back with some more additional information on that once some of the additional program is worked on. But again, as we said, it's not intended to be totally the restaurant. As we had indicated in the previous discussions, that part of the restaurant, there'll be an outdoor vent area, tent area that'll be at the rear of the proposed building. It'll be out in this location in here. And I'll get a little more detail, as I said, after Mark gives a kind of a brief overview of the, of the architecture itself. Regarding the parking, we did look at the standards, but we'll review that again. And maybe part of the confusion is in terms of the amount of parking based on the assumption that was all for restaurant use. So we'll get that clarified when we do the actual submission. Based on our assumptions of the potential use, the square footage of the restaurant and the potential offices, the number of parking spaces we've shown is what we had calculated based on the zoning. So we'll revise that and revisit it for the site plan application itself. Widths of the proposed roadways, actually, we've already started developing the site plan application for this. The dimensions for the parking and the travel ways and everything actually is on a plan, but it was evidently turned off on the plan that was submitted to you. So it was there on a layer. The roadways of the 24-foot travel way, the same thing for the travel aisles for the parking and the depth of the parking spaces, and the required dimensions for the parking as well as the ADA spaces. So those are all reflected, and they'll be added onto the plan that we have. Preliminary infrastructure, again, with the stormwater management. As I said, we're going to be meeting with DEP and dealing with that. All the utilities will be coming in off of Higas Parkway. And there's an existing low-access road that comes in between these two ponds. We'll be building this area up to get the gradient to work, and then working on your sewer for gravity feed coming off. On the plan that we've shown to you, it also shows dead-ending in some of the utilities for future development phases. And that was part of our discussions we'd had with Jamel and Jay several weeks ago. So we've shown a lot of that information on the site as it ties into future development. And we can add notes onto the plan per Jamel's comments to clarify what, where those extensions are wanting, potentially going to go. Development design standards, I'll have Matt talk a little bit about the architectural elevations that we've done, and then I can come back to the site and go over some other details. Regarding meeting with the fire department, that's on our laundry list of things to do with the sewer department. So those are all criteria we know we have to deal with as far as the site plan submission. So with that, I can turn it over to Matt, and Matt can give you a little overview of the architecture itself, and I'll circle back for the more detailed site plan. Matt?
Good evening, Board, Mr. Chair. Matt Provencial from Mark Mueller Architects. Just briefly here, like Bob mentioned, we have a café at the first floor, and we have some office space for a wellness-type user. The second floor has more of that similar space, the wellness-type facility. Another main feature to this whole project is this, this outdoor patio area here. We have it, it's quite large, but there's, there's a lot of sight to take in. There's a lot of natural landscape that we want to take advantage of. And it's, there's kind of this viewing platform here. We have these, you know, gradual ramps that come down, some stairs. We have these features, these, you know, stone walls. And then we kind of gradually come down into this outdoor event area and gardens, and that'll tie into the walking trails, et cetera. One thing we tried to do here is, is keep the scale down a little bit. It's only a two-story building. We have this covered entry element in this vertical kind of tower, which really accentuates and brings everyone kind of to the center here in this nucleus of the whole, you know, phase development here. A lot of natural materials, earth tones is kind of what we're trying to do, you know, this, you know, all this site and taking it in. A lot of glazing, we've paid particular attention. There isn't really a true front to this building, really all sides of the front. There's, you can see it from multiple angles, multiple views. There's plenty to look at. There's a lot of landscape out there. It's going to be, you know, quite the, quite the space out there. We've taken, we've done a little covered pergola with some covered lattice here to, you know, disguise a little bit of the delivery area. It works as far as flow of the traffic and parking. Not, like I said, not really a back-of-house area here. So we put it, we put it in an efficient place near the front, covered it with a pergola, natural materials. We'd like to try to harvest some trees from the site to utilize that in a scenario like Again, you see here from some of the rendering, some warm tones to tie into the natural landscape. You see a little bit of topography kind of down here and how it falls away, and almost like the, you know, this element kind of coming up, you know, out of the ponds. Some of the comments, we'll, we'll take care and we'll be very specific when we respond, you know, to the formal site plan as far as the design standards and maybe a little bit more with the materials. But that's, that's kind of the schematic design here as far as the, you know, phase one building goes.
Thank you.
And again, with the phase one site plan, this is more of the detailed plan. Actually, as I indicated, we've already started putting the site plan application together. So that the stormwater, we were talking about that, the way the grades are working around is to be able to pick up and capture water with some bio-retention areas along the perimeter. And this whole core in here would be bio-retention treatment areas. As I said, we're going to be meeting with DEP to have some additional conversations over this. The other thing is the nature of the soils out there, pretty free draining in a lot of the areas. Well, there are some areas where we do have exposed ledge and the ledge is shallow, so we'll be looking at that and doing some additional testing in terms of depth, just to be sure. And that's part of DEP's stormwater requirements anyway. So in terms of the patio area Matt was starting to talk about, that's in this location in here. What we're looking at is incorporating the edge of the main pond. There was a small area up in here that's a shallow that ties into this pond that was part of the excavation. Part of that has already been part of the reclamation. There's been some restoration or filling of that area. We're looking at capturing that to create part of the event area, as well as what's being referred to as the mother's garden. The idea is, if any of you are familiar with, you know, gardens like up in Mount Desert Isle and the Azalea Gardens, kind of a theme similar to that, to be able to incorporate the natural and planting and incorporate that within the water features itself. And then we carry on a water feature coming along this outer edge in here. The pond on the westerly side, actually, the elevation of that pond is higher than the other ponds. And to accommodate for any, as a spillway, we're putting in an outlet control structure in here, so that in the event this gets up to a certain elevation where it would cross over the roadways, it would be able to outlet in that and then come down into these other ponds. So we're taking all that into consideration. Again, the parking itself, you know, the travel aisles, the parking spaces have all been designed to accommodate that. The circulation's been looked at in terms of being able to get vehicular movement for emergency vehicles, delivery trucks, access for the parking, where we talked about trying to create that slower one-way loop in here. We're talking about pavement treatments in here that are really intended to slow traffic down through that location. And this is the point where I talked about, we changed this divider island in here to really control it as two-way circulation will come around. And ultimately, you know, a future phase will come off of that route, and then there's another phase that would come around this side as well. So we thought that through in terms of being able to look at the future improvements. And the same thing with all the utilities. We've brought all the utility lines into sort of this building, stubbed it on this end to be able to get a phase two, phase three section on this side of the, westerly side of the pond, as well as being able to ultimately extend it back out and get to this side of the pond. So all those features would be part of the site plan approval. Makes sense to install all that infrastructure at this point to be able to go into the future phases without having to disrupt any improvements. So I think that kind of gives you an overview of where we are on this. This is kind of a rendering we put together just to give you kind of an idea of what the green spaces we're looking around the site itself. This is that event area. This would be an area for a tent, preserving as much of the existing vegetation around this little indentation around the pond, the same thing along this edge in here, in this edge of the pond, and then supplementing it. There's some existing vegetation in there that's not really native, and some of it's near its end of its expectancy because of the type of trees that are out. Those things would be removed, and then supplemental plantings would be done. And we'll be showing that information when we actually do the site, full site plan application. So... And that was a, an image we had shown to you way back when we started doing some of the visual studies for the property. This would be coming in with Higas Parkway to your back way back, coming in to show roughly the imagery in terms of the building placement. The large evergreens in here that we're showing, it's the service area that Matt was referring to would be behind this in here, so that we'd be looking and being able to screen that on the approach coming in. And then just some potential, the tent, potential, the tent location and potential awnings coming out of the building. And then this was the aerial perspective we had shown way back, just to kind of give you an idea in terms of the context of the site. The pump house gym is over in here. The bridge is not happening where the area will be filled. This is where the mother garden and the tent area would be. And then this area in here at the other end of this pond area would be utilized for auxiliary parking associated with the events, and that would be shown as part of the site plan submission. So that's an overview of the master plan, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We do have an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that'd like to speak on this topic, please approach the podium.
Hello, my name's Ben Devine with Devine Capital. We're here for items seven and eight, but we are abutters to this. We are the beacon at Gateway, 288 luxury apartments. And it's the first I've really seen of this. I think it's terrific, and we think it'd be a great amenity to what we're doing. And we're very familiar with Bob Metcalf and, and Mike and Mitchell and Associates, and we'd be in full support of this. So we wish you well. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Roger?
First, I, I think this looks really exciting. I remember the fishing hole. And a few questions. Ingasol Drive, is that currently used?
Yes.
It is? Because I recall going from where your father's house and see, wasn't it according to the the top trail there going down? Okay? And if I recall, there's a lot of wooded areas, you know, upland right there. And where this is going to be located is quite a bit lower than the rest of the surrounding site. Okay. So on Ingasol Drive again, where you have these pedestrian pathways like?
The access coming in from the main road.
No, I'm talking about this future.
Yeah.
This one over here.
Yes.
All right. Is that, are you planning to future, in the future, is that going to be planned for pavement? Or is that just going to be regular, like gravel or something like that? Do you know?
Well, I think the intent really is more for the pedestrian-type activity, keep it as natural as possible. It could be gravel, it could be wood chip treatment. It depends on the extent of the type of use that is intended based on the additional programming that happens on that.
Okay.
Trying to stay away from pavement as much as you can.
So the main, the main entrance is going to be off the parkway?
Yes.
And not necessarily off, okay. The, I also noticed in your, in your presentation, you have retaining walls around the ponds, which I think is a good idea, because I recall many springs, those ponds would flood.
Yep.
And the, and the entrance way, the access road, I assume you're going to have to build that up a little bit too, right? Because that sometimes got impassable.
Point the right way, I can show you. Keep going. Yeah, so basically, what we're looking at is the access road coming in here. If you look on this edge here, we're looking at stabilizing the edge with boulders to try and make it as natural as possible, and we're bringing that up about five plus or minus feet in terms of grade. So it'll be stabilized on both sides, coming in on either, on either one of the ponds. Then around this outside terrace area, we'll be looking at stepping it and probably introducing, where we can, larger gravity block-type wall, and then putting plantings in to disguise that wall and using more natural stone material above, so it'll be basically stepping up from the water. So the whole intent is, even the building pad itself, we're coming up, I believe it's three feet is what we're coming up from existing grade around the pond, just so that we're able to be out of any potential flooding based on the fluctuation of the ponds. Actually, on the site analysis plan, we had shown the seasonal variation of the water levels, so that we know exactly, pretty good handle on what the, the changes are seasonally.
Now, now staff is recommending a sidewalk right along the access road. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Hate to be a sidewalk guy, but... Okay, I'll leave, I'll leave that alone right now. The, on the buffering, if I can ask staff also, on the buffering, were you referring, was staff referring to the section up here or over, over in this area here?
I think we're looking at the phase one plan, actually.
Okay.
A more detailed one. And I guess I'd ask the applicant where they plan on putting the buffers. I'm not sure where they, where they want to put them.
Are you looking for buffering around the phase one? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. Go back to the planting plan. So basically, you know, we talked about preserving as much of the existing vegetation along this edge of the pond. The residential uses are way up above here, and this whole section over here is fairly wooded on this side of the pond. So we'll be doing supplemental plantings in along here where needed.
So we'll be doing supplemental plantings in along here where needed. As you start getting in doing any type of site work, you discover that the trees where you think they are not necessarily there. And as we said, some of the conditions of the trees have kind of passed their life expectancy. Some of them, some of the gray birch and some of the white birch and there's some poplar in there. So once that material comes out, we'll be looking at integrating, you know, the more native material that will be able to sustain that buffer and enhance on that edge.
Isn't that the sloped, that's sloped quite a bit there, isn't it?
Oh, this side over in here? Yeah. So in order to put this parking area in here, we'll be dropping the grade as we're filling this side, we'll be dropping this portion of the, the parking in order to balance the site as well as being able to utilize material as part of the roadway improvements.
Okay. My last comment is I, I like the architecture of the building. I think it looks great. So I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Roger. Jen.
Okay, I have a few questions too. Actually, one that Roger sort of touched on, appreciate the gentleman speaking up from the adjacent development. I think that's, I think it's great. I think the, I think the potential of this site to connect to something like that and to have both be in support is really tremendous for both the people that will be living at that complex and the businesses located here and for the town in general. I also had a question about the pedestrian network on site and the material that you're choosing, but it sounds like you answered that. Only other, only other question is sort of out of curiosity, I'm wondering if there are other, if there are similar developments like this elsewhere that you're looking to? It seems very unique to me, so I, I'm.
This is Mike's vision and I think maybe your father had part of that vision as well of how to repurpose this site and really basing it on a wellness component. And so that's, the driving force is his inspiration on this. And then Matt's done a good job trying to figure out to make the building do that exactly, create that image.
It's certainly a unique, a unique site for that. Is there any plan or vision for any type of active water use, like, like kayak or canoe launch or something like that? Or is your, are you sort of not thinking of that?
Well, let's put it this way, there's been a lot of design, you know, concepts as we've developed through this, but in terms of whether or not that's going to be something that's going to function as part of this, we still need to work through some of those details. So that hasn't been totally resolved at this point.
That's all.
Thank you, Jen. Rick.
No, I can remember seeing the first concept of this a few months ago and it's coming together nicely. I'm, I'm quite impressed with the parking compass or whatever you want to call it. I'm anxious to see how, how that looks in the final plan and really get down on the traffic flow and, but this is going, this is pretty remarkable. Encouraged about this, the charging sta, or yeah, the charging stations and the solar on top of the, the building. The facing seems like it would be adequate to do those two sections of the building and kind of leave the tall part pretty much alone. I don't have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Chair. This is looking good.
Thank you, Rick. Robin.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a fabulous design. I applaud your vision and I wish all development was like this in Scarborough, the amount of low-impact development that has really been thoughtfully put into here as well as sustainability is just, it's tremendous. I wish more developers had the same vision that you did with the bio-retention, the utilizing the grades, the, you know. I know it's not natural hydrology anymore, everything's been altered, but the fact that you're going with what's there is, is just really, I think it really marries well with the theme of wellness and harmony kind of a thing. So I, I just want to, I guess, give you a couple reminders as you keep going proactively with these ideas is the aquifer protection overlay zone that we're in, thinking about how we're going to prevent, you know, oil and hazardous chemicals, you know, from entering the aquifer, which, you know, has written right into the ordinance and things like that. So keep continuing to think proactively about that. I really appreciate that. A robust landscape plan, you know, you know, do whatever you can with, with the buffers and, and the, then, you know, the nat, it's, it's, because it is a reclamation site, it's hard to say, you know, go with whatever the natural vegetation is. But, you know, if, if what we've seen here with your development is any indicator into what the landscape plan will be, I'm, I'm sure we won't be disappointed. I would also like to, to remind you again, just as a proactive measure to, when you do have the pre-application meeting with DEP or the application meeting, to please let Angela Blanchett know so that she can be part of this. And I really feel like this is, this is potentially, I think, a case study in development in, in Southern Maine, in Scarborough. And I think both the town and DEP will be really excited to, to have this meeting. So I only, I only have applause for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Rachel.
Yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of what my colleagues have said. This is a very exciting project. Higginson Parkway too long has been kind of a wasteland. When my husband and I first moved here, we looked around and basically there was just about nothing on there. And we've recently seen some, some great uses of, of the Parkway. I was pleased by the comment of the folks from Divine Capital. And I would suggest that you follow up with that as I look at your plan and the potential for the walkways around the ponds. If there is any way that walkways can be, and trails can be connected with the beacon or the Gateway Apartments, I think that would be very positive. I think the folks who are starting to rent now in the Gateway Apartments are the sort of constituents, if you want, consumers who would also appreciate these sorts of amenities. And I can see that as a great benefit to both of you. When we get, when we start to look at this phase, what we start to do is to ask questions that you don't necessarily have to have the answer to right now, but at some point, somebody on the board is going to say, so what do you think about, or why have you done that? Or did you think about this? And that's not meant to be critical. It's meant to give you an opportunity to really take a look at what it is you're doing and, and to help us move this through so that we can get this started and Scarborough can benefit from a development like this. So saying that, I'm going to ask you some of those questions, have you thought about?
I've thought about every one of them, but go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. First of all, the architecture, I applaud you. That's, I, I think the way that building is going to fit into its environment is, is As I look at the plans, I have a couple of questions. And I am looking at A1. And I know, I know what you've discussed is that these are possibly medical areas. I suppose doctors, it could be yoga, it could be other health activities. But I think one of the things that is important for you to do is consider how you're going to direct people to those suites. For instance, I'm looking at Suite 101, which you would access either through Suite 100 or from the outside. And if it's from the outside, how are the customers, how are your clients going to get there? Is there a walkway? Is there signage that directs them there? So the signage to, directing folks to a building that you've already kind of said it really doesn't have a front door, has in a sense four fronts to the building because each one is, is different and each one is unique. Ending the confusion of folks who are trying to figure out where they're going is very important. And that's done by walkways and that's done by good signage. So I would suggest you start to think about how that would work now. The other question I had is, is there any opportunity or is there any thought that these suites ultimately might be subdivided? Is the building set up for that, especially the second floor? I'm looking some pretty large suites there.
Yes, so to that, the, again, these are pretty schematic. So we've, what we've done to show this, kind of our first little rendition here is to show how these two spaces could potentially be broken up. So yes, in, in one instance, if, if this particular scenario were to exist, you know, there, there would be some sort of path that comes out here and this could be, you know, this would be an entrance to a suite. If this were one tenant, if, you know, if one tenant wanted to take the whole thing, this could be a little side entrance or employee access. The main focus, the main entry is here, this will be the signage. This, this whole area here, when you walk in, it's all vaulted and this dotted line here you see, that's open to the second floor above and it's an open balcony and there's a lot of height in there and it's very dramatic. So there would be, there'd be some signage in there, there'd be some, you know, directional directory for the rest of the sign, for the rest of the tenants, excuse me. And then again, this, this would be one tenant, potentially this will be another. And, and yes, if a tenant wanted, you know, to split this space or, you know, there, there's a lot of flexibility we have right now. And again, this is open to below. We haven't really shown entrances into suites a little bit here on this side, but yeah, we're, we're still working on getting some tenants and, you know, working through leases, yes. Those are all, it's still a little fluid right now and flexible.
And I understand that. My suggestion is as you go along, find a way to talk to us in your application about the fluidity.
Absolutely.
And how that can be adapted depending upon the tenants.
Yep.
So then we're not asking you, so how is somebody going to get from here to there?
Yep. Just, just sitting here, I'm, I'm already thinking about how to change it.
And of course, in terms.
I don't want to change it, but I'm already thinking about ways to.
In terms of, in terms of landscaping, while these, the designs that you have here, as I said, are really, I think, wonderful for that area, you're going to need to show us the landscaping in relationship to the building.
Oh, yes.
So again, sometimes it's, there are things that are in the site plans that you know you're supposed to have and somehow or other they don't get into the next application. And then we're sitting here saying, so where is it? So the, these are the things that we think of now that give you an opportunity to move your application through, in some cases faster, as you think about these things and you include them so that we don't have to, we don't have to ask about them. Now, the access is going to be, the term that's been used off of Higginson Parkway is that's a driveway that gets from Higginson Parkway to Phase One to the new place.
That's actually referred to as Ingasol Drive.
Okay. So if it is, if it is a road and you've talked about sidewalks, which of course you will have at least on one side, if not both, nod your head, yes. Okay, good. But also you've talked about this being a bicycle area and you have, you have allowed for bike racks on the plan. Are you going to allow for a bike lane on that road?
We can explore that.
All right, I, I think that would be something, again, to take a look at as more and more people move to bicycles and especially the, the folks that I think you're going to be attracting here. I would be remiss if I did not say that I've got some concerns about the causeway. And I expressed them, I think, when you came before as the first time. And you're talking about raising the, the causeway a bit. I'm worried about what you can't see, not about what you can see on the top of that causeway. And a causeway that works for a few cars might not work if you've got a restaurant that with 75 seats and an event, let's say a wedding going on and the tent and a lot of traffic. And I have concerns about what is underneath the water, not what's on top of the water, not what can be seen in the causeway. So I would like to see an engineer, an engineer take a very hard look and careful study of what's under the surface of that causeway to ensure that it is safe, to ensure that as the seepage goes from pond to pond and the water's levels change, that that seepage has not created a weakness under that causeway.
All those comments are what we're evaluating right now.
Okay, well, in terms of evaluation, I hope I see that engineering study.
You will.
Very good when you come forward. I think, once again, this is a great idea. I have no, no problems with your removing the trees that are dying. I have no problems with your removing invasive species. At some point, we'll want to see what you're going to be doing, especially with the landscaping. Just a little, a little hint that I like, and I really appreciate attempts to help the pollinators, to have the sort of gardens that attract the bees and the monarch butterflies and the hummingbirds. So as you're looking at that and you're looking at, at what you're going to do with that, just as a note, that property that's, well, it's owned by, I believe, Kerry Anderson, that there were, there are going to be some industrial buildings along Higginson Parkway.
Right.
The distance pretty much from Ingasol Drive, close to the second pond, is going to be a wildflower meadow. So carrying that theme through creates a, really a cohesive whole from Higginson Parkway, from the road, all the way through the, the back of that property that you have. And I think that would create a fantastic visual for folks as they're going through. And I think I've probably given you my thoughts and hope that you're.
Appreciate that.
I'm looking forward really to seeing what you come back with. I think this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Rick.
I think Rachel did a good job covering most everything, so I don't really have any other questions. I do think it's a great project. I have some questions later, I'm sure, but as far as conceptual master plan, I think you've got everything you need.
Thanks, Rick. So I'll, I'll sit here and I'll tell you, the architecture I think is great. That building looks nice. If I had to highlight a couple of concerns for down the road, I think I like the parking design, it's unique. A little worried about the flow of that, but I'll, I think you're going to figure that out before you get to that next phase. You do have crossover, it would appear, some of the directional arrows in their current form, you'll have crossover, some people going left and some people trying to stay right. And it looks like it could get messy in that triangle area, but I'm sure you can figure that out. My other concern would be parking fields. If you do have events down in that back, I don't know if you have enough parking to supplement, you know, restaurant use, office use, and then maybe an event at the same time. And I, you know, I'd hate to see any type of encroachment of the parking spots of any of your neighboring businesses. And not only that, I think what you're developing here in its entirety is going to attract people who just want to park and walk. So I think keeping that in mind as you develop into that first phase, you know, whether it's parking fields for those, those types of users that are separate from maybe the office type or the restaurant type of user. So, and then additionally, just making sure that you're thinking ahead when you talk about the restaurant proposed use, if you're going to have outdoor seating on that patio, which I'm sure would be a huge bonus, you know, having a meal and overlooking the pond, you know, make sure that, that's appropriately accounted for in your calculations, whether it's a seasonal and, but I'm sure Jemel will help remind you of all that as you get to that point. So outside of that though, I think for a master conceptual plan, you're, you're in the right spot. I assume you don't have any other issues with staff comments and that you'll be ironing them out as you get to that next spot.
Pretty straightforward.
So with that said, I'll move to approve the conceptual master plan titled Totem Pond. Can we do it during discussion?
Sure.
Proposed by Michael Scamman as depicted on the plan set prepared by Mitchell and Associates dated 7/25/19 and with the following, following findings. Findings, the planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the conceptual master plan is consistent with the site inventory and analysis and reflects a reasonable utilization of the site given both environmental and built environmental. and reflects a reasonable utilization of the site, given both environmental and built environmental considerations. The conceptual master plan is also consistent with the space and bulk standards, the development standards and other requirements for plan developments in the Higginson Parkway zoning district. During site plan review, the final location of all the utilities, driveway, location and parking will be determined. The site plan submission shall address the remaining staff review comments in the memo dated 8/12/19.
Second.
Motion, second, and we have discussion. Roger?
Yes, and this is probably directed towards Mr. Scamman. To follow up on something Rachel was asking, on the additional spaces besides the restaurants, I thought, it was my impression that those are gonna be part of the, like, breakout rooms for the, you know, the wellness activities that are going there. Or are they gonna be, do you, do you envision them being more like business, you know, separate businesses but are related to wellness?
Could I ask you to step up to the podium and just introduce yourself?
How you doing? Mike, Mike Scamman, 39 Ingleside Drive. Roger, we don't have tenants at this point, but we are searching out, we're, we're interviewing.
Okay, so it will be tenants?
It'll be tenants, yes.
Okay, and, and, you know, the only other question I have is, will this facility be open to the public? If they, for instance, they wanted to go into the restaurant or if they want to say...
Most certainly, yes.
Or they want to use one of those breakout rooms or those, well, actually, there's not gonna be a breakout room, so I guess that's a mute question. Okay.
Right now, they're just open spaces. We're, we're looking at the cafe conference rooms. There's been a request for several doctors to have small areas where we could have breakout rooms. We don't have tenants at this point. There's gonna be some more drawing as far as internally. Right now, it's just the, the box concept we've got, but we're working towards that.
Great, great.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? All in favor? So there's unanimous, thank you, good luck.
Next item is Main Medical Center, request a site plan review for AD Campus Drive, assessment map R76, Lot 4B. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project, as you guys all know, is located at the existing Main Med Campus at AD, or in the Business Office Research Zoning District. So the applicant was last before you all in June with the site plan submission. And just as a reminder, they're proposing 108,000 square foot, three-story medical building at their existing campus. So the applicant is still waiting for their, as far as we know, the applicant's still waiting for their main DEP permit. So tonight's review should focus on the remaining main issues identified as traffic and parking. So as requested, the applicant has provided additional, quite a bit of additional traffic information with the application. The applicant's noted that 250 new vehicle trips will be entering and leaving the site. Given the significant amount of new trips, the town's traffic consultant has suggested the following improvement, improvements to the Route 1 Green Acres Hillcrest intersection. So I'm just gonna go through these real quick. The replacement of the existing yield sign within the right slip, right turn slip lane approach with a stop sign and red flags. Provide a left turn, left turn striping improvements for the dual left turn out of Green Acres Lane. And then install radar-based detection and dilemma zone protection on the Route 1 approaches to reduce the number of crashes due to motorists running red lights at the intersection. So the board and the applicant should be sure to discuss these suggested improvements. And finally, as suggested by the board, the applicant has reduced the amount of parking and impervious surface on the site. So the applicant should provide the board with an update on that. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. If you'd like to just kinda briefly go over, go over some of the items that staff has touched on, some of the more recent changes to your plans, appreciate it.
Sure, okay. Good evening, Steve Casabian, Chief Administrative Officer at Main Medical Partners, Main Medical Center's own medical group. I keep my comments very brief and let others get up and, and deal directly with some of the questions and comments that have come from staff. But last time we were here, we spoke to you about our pedestrian amenities, electronic vehicle accommodations, landscaping plans, site and plan, site plans, lighting plan, and then also the parking utilization, which we've done a considerable amount of work on and will cover just a bit later. This evening, we'll cover the elevations for the buildings, some screening that was requested and, and discussed earlier for portions of the building, and then several site plan changes that we think are, will be of interest to you and address questions that we have received to date. Very quickly, I'm just reminding you guys of the scale of this project. This is neurosciences, neurosurgery, pain management, neurology, vascular surgery, and then otolaryngology, your nose and throat, as we commonly call it. Gonna, gonna occupy this building in a fairly densely planned site, which is really code for, we're using every inch we can to take care of patients. These are expensive buildings to build, so we're being very smart with our space. The three practices today are spread about South Portland and Portland. Not particularly easy for our patients to navigate and we, we make them travel to a number of different locations to get their care today. This will greatly improve that access for those patients.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Robert Corson, I'm from SMRT Architects. And we're gonna go through some of the comments that came back from the, from the latest staff comments, so that we can kinda go through those. And so, part of that, obviously, is a recap of the, of the building, which we've just discussed, as far as the size of the building, kind of the height of the building, parking spaces, things like that associated with that. One of the comments, obviously, was talking about ultimately plans associated with the building. This is a ground floor plan. We have towards the top of the page, kind of a access point on the top of the page. The front of that, front of the building would be impacted or below grade on the front of the building. That's first floor, which is a kind of drop-off location at the bottom of the page, kind of the main entry point. Egress stair off to the left-hand side and an egress stair that would connect both, all floors on the rear of the building. Again, because the project's broken up into two kind of distinct phases, this is a, what we call a core and shell, kind of the exterior building envelope, skin, vertical circulation as part of this. We're still in the process of developing the actual interior fit-up plans that actually associated with each of the practices. So as we get, go further, we'll, we're using this, obviously, these are the organizing pieces, which is elevators and stairs that actually will help keep the organization within the, within the actual clinic area. Again, the three floors, second and third floor, fundamentally the same footprint roof plan. Let me go back. With a, a one stair, which is off to the top of the page, which is accessing to the roof, with an actual stair that goes on to the roof where systems and some of the air handlers and other mechanical equipment will be. The other request, obviously, is exterior elevation with specific material selection. As noted before, we have, it's primarily a brick building. And then the panels are a composite panel of stone and fiberglass, stone panels that make up the, the, kind of the lighter tone on the building. Front canopy to allow for pedestrian drop-off and also allow for any kind of ambulance to be pulled up to there if they happen to need to pick up a patient or, or drop off. So this would be the front, really basically facing southerly. The top elevation really kind of facing to, to the westerly side. The stair, kind of a component, really, which is the lighter tone one on the top elevation and on the both left-hand side for vertical circulation. Rear of the building, kind of the bottom page, so that's basically the, the back, which faces a, another parking area. Loading and service to the left-hand side, that'll actually where all the utilities come in, the generator, loading dock, trash, things like that, coming, going in and out of the building, also an access point. And to the top of the page, really is our easterly elevation, facing, a good portion of the upper level parking would be facing in that area. The screening that we actually described last time, which is, this is at the, at the loading dock area to screen, what I'll call the easterly and the westerly side of the, the loading dock area. Again, it's an aluminum fencing to allow both, you know, screening as well as maintaining some of the lower maintenance of something that's a pre, pre-painted, pre-finished product versus, say, wood fencing or things like that to be able to maintain over time. Overall site plan, again, our building is central to the, to the plan. What I'm showing here, actually, there are two, two kind of changes that we are actually indicating on the plan. To the center top, we actually have taken the parking field of center top and, and actually reoriented the aisles. So actually, it will be two long aisles. This allowed us to accommodate some of the pedestrian circulation, which we discussed before, plus the idea of, of looking at a reduction in the actual parking spaces. On the, just off to the left-hand side would be another change, which was the change to the connection to the parking lot, which is adjacent to the surgical center, which again allowed us to make some adjustments and reduce some parking. I'll actually go to a little more detail of that, that section. So this is the upper, upper lot. Again, as you've noticed, the sections, the two sidewalks, added sidewalks, kind of going both to the, the northerly and the southerly side of the, of the lot, kind of collecting the upper lot and then going into filtering down into the two sidewalks, which were in the previous plan that'll bring from the, kind of the easterly side to the, to the westerly side of the site. At the upper right-hand corner, we actually have indicated 39 paper spaces or, you know, paper parking spaces. Again, we've gone to basically 452 spaces with 39 spaces for future development. One of the questions that came up on the comments was, was this going to be accounted for as part of the stormwater management system? And yes, it would be, it would be constructed and designed to accommodate that for future development. The grading and everything else would be set up and prepped for future development if that need ever came about. So those are some of the sections on that. Again, on the left-hand side of the page, there was a request for a guard rail on the left-hand side, which is the northerly side of the site. We can, one of the things we will, as far as, there was another request from some additional guard rails, which we'd like to just, you know, discuss that further with the staff, just to figure out exactly where that would begin and end, so we can kind of come to an agreement on where that portion is. We have our, on this upper lot, we have the charging stations. And luckily, we got the, the pre-cluder from the earlier meeting talking about ultimately what the management plan is for that. Right now, we're looking at those, we manage on a, open during normal business hours. And then, I think, taking into heart the idea that we need to have a, kind of an operational plan about type and some sort of indicator of those, those spaces. The lower lot, again, one of the two things we did is we raised that back section of the parking lot and discontinued the connection to the parking lot for the surgical center. With that, we, there were some advantages because of the, the amount of ledge that's on the site and some of our stormwater was in that area. So this actually was an opportunity to both have less disturbance on that existing lot and to actually reduce some of the, the overall parking areas there. We continued on with the connecting pedestrian connection from that lot back up to our pedestrian circulation up at the main, or the back side of the building, so we can continue that kind of overall campus circulation. In this one, actually, you kind of see the bluish tone, which is on the upper side of the upper lot, as well as to the left side of the lower lot, which we have kind of snow storage indicated. One of the things we need to do is make sure that that snow storage area is carried through, so it actually is illustrated on the actual site plans as part of the, the request from, from staff. And that really kind of goes through the, the site plan portion. Obviously, they, some of the other comments, we had to do with additional signage, yield signs, some traffic signs around the curves that are on, on Campus Drive. Again, those have been added, so that kind of internal circulation arrows to indicate direction as far as one-way signage to indicate the one-way areas versus two-way areas. The stop sign at the four-way intersection that's directly in front of the, the entry to the, to the lot. So I think all the signage that was associated with the comments were, were added from the traffic signage portion. That's it for site plan. Any questions regarding the site plan portion? Or do you wanna...
Just, is that the, do you have any more presentation for us, or is that pretty much...
Do you wanna have Randy talk more about the, the traffic and circulation portion?
Yeah, why don't you go through your whole presentation and then we'll...
I'll go over the presentation. Thanks, I'm Al Green, I'm Director of Planning for Main Health. And just wanna say that Main Medical Center and Main Medical Partners are really excited about this project. And we're also very conscious about connecting project updates with our neighbors. And we've already connected with the property owner and the residents from behind the, the abutting site behind, just to the east, and are planning to post updates about the project on our project website, which also has project updates for the Bramhall Campus project in Portland. That information is available there. As to the timeline, this is the third time we've, we've been in front of you, so appreciate all the time that you've spent talking to us about our project. And we anticipate Main State a DEP approval, hopefully in October, plan to come back to you around that time. So, until now, I'll open it up for questions.
All right, thank you very much. We do have an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium, give your name and a couple of comments. Seeing that, I'm gonna close, public comment. Let's see, let's start with Jen on this one.
Okay. Um, I do, I, so, thank you for your efforts in adding pedestrian connectivity into that upper lot. I think that's a good addition. And with just, with the size of that parking field, I think it will be, I think it will be a benefit to everyone. I just wanted to clarify, actually, in your presentation, and there's a couple of, so I'm looking at the difference here between sheet C000, the cover sheet, and then you have the overall plans, but specifically sheet C103. On the cover sheet, it looks like there are no, in the area that you're talking about connecting the, so the lower proposed parking area with the parking field for the surgical center, I think if you go back one more slide, yeah, that one. The layout on the cover sheet just looks a little bit different, so I just wanted to clarify that you are, are those, are the parking spaces around the curve in that red box, are those existing or proposed?
Around the curve here, you can't see my cursor.
Like, adjacent to the yellow, the walkway that's been highlighted in yellow?
Those are existing.
Existing, okay. Okay. And so what, what you were saying was just that you're, you're changing the grade of the lower lot in order to sort of meet, tie into those a little bit better?
Correct. Yeah, actually, there's a, there's a pretty significant grade change between the new proposed lot on the lower side of that red box and the existing spaces. lot on the lower side of that red box and the existing spaces. And the change is that we're actually not going to be impacting the grade as much as we were previously.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, other questions that I have? In going through your response to comments, the item for lighting, town staff asked that the, that the lights be dimmed after the close of business and your response didn't seem to, just left that still a little bit unclear. It sounds like you'll maintain control of those lights, but it was unclear about whether or not you intend to dim them after you're closed.
We will maintain control and the plan currently is that we will plan to dim them. We still need to go through the, our internal security to make sure that's okay, but future submissions will reflect that.
Okay. And then the comment on signage, it sounds like you're, there's a couple of sort of traffic and circulation signage questions that came up, but then also you sort of allude to looking at your signage package overall for the, for the entire development, but actually with your timeline that you just showed, my question is no more clear about, or about future submissions on that. I was curious if you'd be coming back to staff for a review on that, but it sounds like you'll be, you'll be back in front of the board anyway, so I assume that you would, is that something that you think you'll have prepared for us to look at in October?
Yes, we'll have it. Actually, you touched on one of my questions that I was going to ask after we're done with questions and that's as to the questions and comments that we've received so far asking whether or not we felt that we needed to come back and present after we've got the DEP approval.
It, it sounds like there's, you know, I feel like we talked a fair amount about signage last time and, you know, if you're sort of looking at a new sign program for the entire, for the entire site, I would be interested in seeing that, you know, again, partially for the, for the circulation and kind of traffic safety, but other things like, you know, do you have parking areas that you're intending to be solely for patients or for staff, for the general public, you know, if you, if there's access to any of the pedestrian network on, on your site or things of that nature? Just curious.
Okay.
And then my only other statement, I suppose, is that I appreciate the staff comments on mitigation at that Route 1 intersection and will look forward to post-project monitoring to see if any of those mitigation elements have helped to kind of address the sort of traffic, crash problem that was identified out there, you know, not technically a high crash location, but certainly enough problem activity there that it's, it's worth, worth working on. So hope that you're able to address a couple of those.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Rick.
More on the, on the building, is there the thought of maybe fencing in, I assume you're going to put some RTUs up on the top and is that going to be visible, will those units be visible from the Route 1 coming both ways? Probably not coming from South Portland, but. Give some thought about maybe fencing or cover those up so they can't be seen from Route 1 if it's possible. And then a detailed photometric drawing in your next submission would be helpful with the fixture types and making sure that they're all full cutoff on your budding, budding side. Other than that, I'll say.
Thanks, Rick. Rachel.
This may be shocking, but I have very little left to say. I appreciate your thoughts about the charging stations and that you're going to look at how they're going to be managed. I think they're an excellent feature, but they have to be thought out very carefully. And am I correct on the architecture? The last time we had a discussion, the side of the building facing Route 1 had been pretty blank and I had a question about adding some interest to that. Had you done that?
Rob, can you help me with that?
I, I seem to, I think that you have, but I'm just not clear.
If you look at the top elevation, that's actually the Route 1 elevation?
Yes.
So a lot of the area that's on, what I'll call the bottom left-hand corner, so that's a landscaped area in that corner, so that's.
And you've changed the color of the siding?
Yep, coloration of the panels. It brought the panels down to the, to grade.
I, I think that meets the intent of the, of the design standards. I appreciate that you've done that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thanks, Rachel. Robin.
How, with respect to snow storage, how will those snow storage requirements be related to facilities management or the contracted property management folks?
So Maine Medical Center, Maine Medical Partners, facilities management is actually involved in the writing of how this plan is drawn up, so very involved.
Do you think it'll be contracted folks or will it be facilities management?
I think it is contracted folks.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
So that will be included in sort of like whatever contractual agreement that you would have with that person? Great. You had asked whether or not you thought that you'd need to come to the planning board again. Just from, from my opinion, my humble opinion, I think you have a few more things to do. We've talked about the auto turn simulation, the photometrics, and I'm going to harp on the landscape plan and things like that, but I think you're in a really good trajectory and if you continue working with staff like you have, you know, I see that you're on a really good path and that, you know, you'll come before us with your, with all of your approvals in hand so that we can, we can move forward maybe one more time because I think we do want to see a little bit, bit more, but you have plenty of time to do that and staff will help you polish it all up, I think. I want to encourage you to, you probably have had all your meetings with your, with the DEP for permits and things like that. I know other towns are different. Portland, they don't necessarily, where they're delegated, but just a reminder to take, to give notice to our town engineer whenever those happen. It really helps a lot. I see in the staff comments that there is a request for waiver from going from 25 feet parking aisle width to 24 feet. Considering all the work and reconfiguration that you all have done with the 39 paper parking spaces and the other work, I, and the, and that the stormwater management has attributed for all the future and existing parking spaces. I per, I can't speak for my other fellow board members, but I personally would not be, have an objection to the reduced aisle width, parking aisle width. So I guess my last question to you all is if you're in agreement with the upgrades regarding traffic, putting up new signs and the radar-based detection and dilemma zone. So are you all sort of, there's, there's no heartburn or deal breakers here kind of thing? You'll bring your neurology center to Scarborough?
It's at expense, so there's always heartburn, right?
I know.
I think with the amount of traffic and it'll just serve both the patients of Maine Medical Partners and the residents of the development behind.
It's nice to hear that. And I would just like to say thanks for all the hard work that you have brought to the table and will be bringing to Scarborough, so thank you to Maine Health and Maine Medical Partners.
Thanks, Robert. Roger.
I don't have too much to say about this other than I'm assuming that regarding lighting, landscaping, et cetera like that, it's going to be consistent with what you have on the campus right now.
Absolutely.
Okay. Regarding the, the intersection where Hillcrest and Route 1 is, have you had any discussions with the town engineer about that at all? And the reason I bring it up is because there's a Route 1 corridor study being done right now and that's a primary focal point, that intersection there. And I believe what they're thinking about in the short term is restriping, you know, Route 1 in that area there and doing something with Hillcrest and the, the street across, excuse me, across the way. So I would suggest you touch base with Angela just to make sure everybody's on the same page when it comes to whatever you're doing there. And I have nothing further.
Thanks, Roger. So I'll just cap it off by saying, you know, I do appreciate the extra work you've taken into our last meeting where you incorporated the comments, especially reducing the number of parking spots, kind of going with that, the paper solution. And I think you've come, you know, a pretty long way here and it looks really good. I think the next steps, of course, for, aside from the DEP permit that you'll need in hand upon your next visit, just making sure that we button up the intersection, some of, addressing some of Bill Bray's comments through the traffic study, and then just some touch-up with staff and you're, you're right there. So aside from that, you know, we'll see you again as soon as the DEP permit comes in and you've touched it all up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
Next item on the agenda is Central Maine Power requests a site plan review for 35 Broadturn Road Assessor's Map R-47 Lot 8B. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project is located along Broadturn Road in the R2 zoning district. They were last, applicant was last before the board, one or two meetings ago in July and they're proposing a new substation facility comprised of a crushed stone yard, a single-story control house, and associated electrical components. Not sure why it's not showing up on the screen, but we'll just keep going. So since the last meeting with you all, the applicant has worked with the sanitary district on eliminating the existing driveway to the sewer pump house. And it appears that the applicant's going to provide access to the pump house within their driveway configuration. And there's another comment given, again, the project is located in the Phillips Brook watershed, which has been listed as an urban impaired stream. Staff has provided several suggestions that the project be designed to preserve the 25-foot setback to the stream as much as possible and also suggested the applicant provide additional ground cover plantings between the paved area and the street and setback to help filter any stormwater runoff from the site. And I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jamel. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce your, well, you don't have to introduce projects, we've seen it before. If you could just tell us your name and then go over kind of some of the changes that you've had since the last time you were here and address some staff comments specifically?
Sure.
Thanks.
My name is James Moran. I'm with Burns &amp; McDonnell. I'm representing Central Maine Power on this project. Certainly appreciate the board's time, come visiting you before. We have made some changes, as you've seen from our latest submission materials, primarily changes we're coordinating, as was indicated, with the sanitary district about a combined access, which we've illustrated on the site plan. We've also narrowed the access road from 20 feet to 15 feet to minimize impacts. We've changed the cover from gravel to, we're going to pave the driveway. And we've discussed and planned on additional plantings, as Jamel indicated, between the driveway and within the 25-foot setback. I think those are some of our, our major changes that we've done. And now I'd like to just, you know, briefly go over the latest comments, the peer review comments and the comments, staff comments, and answer any questions after that. So the peer review comments talked about the state permits, which we have been, I think we talked about last time, but we have received the DEP comments, the National Research Protection Act permit by rule. We're waiting on the comments back from the full stormwater permit. I've reached out to our DEP agent and those are still under review, but I do have a copy of the cover page for the NERPA PBR. And we also have the Army Corps of Engineers permit in hand. So once we get the full stormwater permit, which hopefully will be within the next month, we can present those to the board as our permits from the state. There is a question from the peer review regarding the utility pole relocations, which are along the, the road frontage, and there was some question as to finally, how they would be reflected and maybe they're not adequately reflected. Those changes will be, be made and more clearly reflected on our next submission material. There was a question about the basic standards to provide adequate erosion and sediment control plans that were part of the original submission. There was some indication those were adequate and these should be included as part of the final stamp set. I believe we did provide the stamp set, the 15 copies, they were signed, stamped, and dated by our engineer. Maybe the electronic PDFs weren't included, so I did have some confusion on the nature of this additional submission request since it was provided. We can discuss that after. But we, since we will be making changes to the site and grading plan with the pole location relocation on the road frontage, that will be reflected in all of the plan sets, including the erosion and sediment control plan. So those will be updated to reflect those changes. And when we do, when we do do that, they will be stamped, signed, stamped, and dated by our engineer. With regard to the board staff comments, there was some question as to whether we can preserve the 25-foot stream setback and have all of the plans reflect that there are no grading that will take place within the 25-foot setback. I believe currently there is some minor grading aside from the stream crossing and our engineer has indicated that we will be able to address that in our, in our final plan submission to show that there will be no, no grading within the 25-foot setback. The board indicated, had some questions about the ground plantings within the 25-foot setback in the accessway. Our original submission, and I'm not sure if it was clearly indicated, that all ground disturbance would be seeded and be revegetated with natural grass. We indicated that we would put some native riparian species, which we've shown on our landscaping plan, but I guess there was some question as opposed to ground cover plantings to filter any stormwater runoff. I guess I'd be looking for the board. I interpret the ground cover plantings as a grass, some, you know, native conservation mixed grass as a filter method, which we would do on all of our disturbed soils. We're proposing to augment that with the, with the native riparian species, but to assure the board that the, the ground cover plantings between the paved area and the 25-foot setback was always proposed as part of our site development and revegetation plan. But we, we can show that on our landscaping plan more clearly to answer that. There was some questions regarding removing the, changing the access for the substation, for the pump house, the sanitary pump house, where we're removing a portion of their access along the road frontage and reallocating it off of a shared driveway. I think we've reflected in our grading plan that that pavement would be pulled up and be revegetated, and I think there was some question as to revegetate with what. Right now, the, the plan is to plant grass, native conservation mix of just grass along that, along that section that would be, the pavement would be removed. And we can, you know, show that in our landscaping plan. Question was, given that there'll be two accesses served off to a proposed driveway, would it be considered a private drive and we should coordinate with the police department on, on a naming of the private driveway? I had a meeting with Deputy Chief O'Malley today. We talked about the procedures to do that and we will be coordinating, CMP will be coordinating with the sanitary district on a common, you know, name for that shared driveway and we can, you know, present that to the board. But just to know that we have met with Deputy Chief O'Malley and understand the procedures needed to put together a driveway and have that label, have that signage put in place. With regards to our landscaping buffer plan, we will make some, some minor changes based on the board's recommendation and understand that it needs to be signed, stamped, and dated by a registered landscape architect registered in the state of Maine, which will be part of our final submission. of our final submission. And the, I think the last issue on these comments were regarding the stormwater management and given that the presence of wetlands on the site, the applicant should provide at least one row of silt fencing at the permits' limit of disturbance. I'm not sure if it, you know, if it was noted, but it is, it is part of the sediment erosion control plan that we do have in place and that the, this erosion and sediment control plan should help be provided with the final submission. So we do have two roads and one of, you know, the roads would be silt fencing. I believe it was reflected. So we will, you know, update, the plan will be updated anyway to reflect the, the poles along the road frontage, as all the plans were. So once we submit our final submission, you know, that'll all be clearly shown on all of the plan sets, the site grading and erosion sediment control. So with that, I, I think I've answered all the questions, or at least.
Thank you very much.
If there's any follow-up, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. We do have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this issue, please approach the podium. Just state your name and any concerns you may have. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. This one is pretty far along, so I'll just ask in general if there's anyone here that has a question or comment from the board. Go ahead and jump right in if you're ready.
Just me.
Go ahead, Robyn.
Um, I think if you just talk with Angela, you'll get most of this stuff most of the way there, because I feel like both Page One and Page Two with respect to landscape buffering and, and planting are, are very much all related and can easily be fixed. I think that you're very much on the, on the right path kind of thing. And the only thing I want to make sure of is that there is no grading within 25 feet of, of the brook that's traversing this.
That's correct. There is no grading.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you will be, will you be putting additional plantings in that 25-foot buffer?
Not within the 25-foot buffer.
Okay, but outside the 25-foot buffer.
Yes, there's no grading.
Okay.
There'll be no disturbance within the 25-foot buffer.
So just continue to, if you could just improve the, the landscape plan to, to call those things out.
Understood.
Very, very clearly. That would be great. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with a comment or two? No. So if the rest of this board is comfortable with it, I'd like to have this on the consent agenda for next, next meeting when your permit is in hand.
Okay.
Just put it on as a consent item, save you some time and some homework, as long as you can work out all the issues with staff and address them, which seems like you're well on your way to doing.
Yeah.
We'd have you on as a consent item, okay?
Okay.
Sound good?
So if I can ask, with the, with regards to the final submission package, once we make these last minute, these adjustments, the final submission, I mean, I've been making, we've been making adjustments and changes to the documents that have been needed changes, and I haven't, you know, presented any of the old material, because it hasn't been any issues. But the final submission is it submissions of the materials that we're making adjustments to, or is it the final submission of all the materials that have been reviewed, you know, in prior meetings? If you understand, if I'm asking myself clearly, or if you understand my question.
Jamel?
I think you'd make it easier administratively for a fresh set of everything.
Okay.
But if you want to try and piecemeal it together, we can, we can work through that as well.
Okay. And then with the, is it one copy for the final, or is it 15 copies of all the materials?
It would be a full submission, 15 copies. As long as everything's addressed, it'd be just a consent and basically ready with a motion.
Okay.
At the beginning of the next meeting.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, good luck.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, okay? Our next item tonight is Divine Capital LLC requests a subdivision amendment for 1,000 Gateway Boulevard Assessor's Map R-040 Lot 14. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the Gateway Commons Project, and it's located in a contract zone and in the Higas Parkway zoning district. So the applicant's proposing a subdivision amendment to include the addition of two new commercial lots with frontage along Gateway Boulevard and Higas Parkway. Staff would like to note that the approved contract zone agreement does allow for commercial development, and so no contract zone amendment is required. So given that Higas Parkway is a state-of-main restricted-access roadway, staff would like to point out that the proposed commercial lots will be strictly required to have access provided along Gateway Boulevard. And staff provided the board with a draft motion. And I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. The applicant would like to approach and give us their rundown, please.
Uh, thank you, Will Conway Sebago Technics. I don't have a lot to add to what Jamel said. If members were on the board when we brought the, the Gateway Commons residential project forward, this area was always envisioned for commercial uses. We're simply here to formalize that into two lots, each of them is about two acres. And we understand and expect a condition of access restricted to Gateway Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Does anyone here on the board have any questions regarding this application? Yes, Rachel.
Yeah, I, I don't really have a question so much as a, a comment, and I have heard nothing but praise around town and folks that I've talked to for the design of the, of the facility, for the design. And folks, you know, really like it, and I have, so saying that, I will say I kind of have an expectation that whatever goes into these two commercial lots is in keeping with the excellent design that's there so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other board members? Seeing none, with that, I'm going to move to approve the project titled First Amendment Subdivision Plan Proposed by Divine Capital LLC Is Depicted on the Plan Set Prepared by Sebago Technics Dated 7/22/19 With the Following Findings and Conditions. Findings: The first amended subdivision plan of the residence is at Gateway Commons, includes the addition of two new commercial lots with frontage along Gateway Boulevard and Higas Parkway. Property is located within a contract zone, and the proposed amendment does not require a contract zone amendment with the town. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, finds that the proposed lot configuration adequately addresses the requirements of the subdivision and contract zoning agreement. Conditions: One, in accordance with the approved contract zone agreement, any development will need to foster the commercial and mixed-use activities and amenities desired within the underlying Higas Parkway zoning district. Two, given that Higas Parkway is a state-of-main limited-access roadway, access easements shall be provided to the two commercial lots along Gateway Boulevard. Three, prior to the signing of the release of the Mylar, Plan Note Number 26 shall be updated to include the approved subdivision plan from 2017. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. That is the motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sure that to be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Divine Capital LLC requests a site plan amendment for 1,000 Gateway Boulevard Assessor's Map R-040 Lot 14. Jamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the applicant here is proposing a site plan amendment now to the same project to eliminate a parking garage and modify the parking area adjacent to building 10,000. So staff has adjusted several minor modifications to the plans, and these have been incorporated into a draft motion for the board's consideration. Turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. The applicant would like to please introduce the changes in the project. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Will Conway Sebago Technics. Yeah, again, not a lot to add. If those of you wondering, why are we removing a garage? It's because the, they're finding now with the project being occupied that the surface parking is actually easier to utilize. You don't have to do a garage door. So that's the reason for it. But I have no further comments on the application.
Thank you very much, Will. We have opportunity for public comment on this item. If there's anyone here that would like to address, please step up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. And again, I'm going to open this up to the board for discussion. Is there any questions or comments regarding this? Roger.
I just, just a couple of general questions. I, I agree with, I think it was Rachel, that said the, the site looks terrific. The architecture and everything really is coming along nicely. And I'm just kind of curious, this is more for the public's benefit, I'm just kind of curious, how, what percentage of the site is occupied right now?
Ben Divine, Divine Capital, it's great news. The question was what percent is occupied, and we are roughly halfway through the build phase, and we are 100% leased right now, and the next building will come online in October. And as of today, there are 24 units in the building, and we already have 11 leases. This is far exceeding our expectations, so we're really excited about it.
That's good to hear. And another concern that was expressed by some people in the public was the number of children in the place.
Yeah, and we've been asked by the town to update them on that, and we are assembling that information and getting it to the planning department. But I, I maybe misspeak, but we are below what we projected as far as children in the school system. I was over there today, there are a lot of grandkids that don't live there, but were their grandparents in the pool and the like, but as school-aged children, we are, we're definitely below projections. But it's on us to deliver that information to, to the town, and we're assembling that now.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board? All right, seeing none, I have a motion here. Move to approve the site plan modifications proposed by Divine Capital LLC Is depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebago Technics Dated 7/22/19 With the Following Findings and Conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to eliminate a parking garage and modify the parking area adjacent to unit 10,000 on the site. The property is located within the Hygus Parkway zoning district and a contract zone. The property is identified on the town of Scarborough tax maps as map R40, lot 14. Planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization, layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Conditions: One, the applicant shall revise the plan set to include (a) an additional overall site plan depicting the proposed changes and applicable plan updates, i.e. parking, renumbered garages, et cetera.[645.32][645.32](b) A revised plan title as noted in the staff review memo dated 8/12/19. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. And (number two), the applicant shall address the peer review comments from Woodard and Kearns memo dated 8/19. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. That is the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? So that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck. Next item we have on the agenda is F9 Properties LLC requests a site plan amendment for 374 U.S. Route 1 assessors map U39, lot 45. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project is located in the B3 zoning district at the former Atlas Fireworks Building. Just a quick reminder, the board did grant approval for the renovation of the existing structure on the property and the construction of a 700-square-foot accessory storage building back in June. As the board may recall, the applicant placed a temporary retail sales and showroom trailer on the site during a review in June. The board granted approval of the project with the condition that the trailer be removed to the site, given it was not provided on the plans. So the applicant did remove the trailer to comply with this condition, and they're before you this evening to place the temporary retail sales trailer on the site. Staff would like to note that at the interdepartment review meeting, just as a reminder, we meet with, staff meets with all, staff from all departments in the town to review all projects on upcoming planning board agendas, and at this meeting, staff from police, fire, public works, codes, and planning all expressed concerns about attracting the public to an active construction site of this size. Given that there is very little room within the parking area and the plans do not show any separation from the construction site, and where the customers would enter and park, staff does recommend that the trailer not be placed on the site. At this point, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. The applicant would like to introduce his name and the project, please.
Yes. Good evening. Andy Morrell from BH2M. Also with me is Patrick Dugas, the contractor. As Jamel said, the site plan was approved in June earlier this year. Applicant is looking to amend the site plan to add a mobile showroom. Some brief details on the mobile showroom, you can look in the cover letter we provided as part of this application. There's kind of a summary in there from the applicant of why they wanted the mobile showroom on-site. Some of the highlights of that, the trailer houses the office for a store manager to allow for appointments and show samples and finalized designs prior to the store opening. The trailer does not attract walk-up customers. No deliveries are anticipated to this trailer. No products are distributed out of this trailer, and the trailer will be removed once the store is operational. The plans we have submitted, we've shown two locations for this trailer, depending on what portions of the site are being worked on. We'll touch on that again briefly. But we did receive some of the town comments. Appreciate the town taking a look at this. I understand their concerns are regarding safety and access to the construction site. I'm going to have Patrick come up and touch on that. Thank you.
Good evening, Patrick Dugas, Dugas Construction. I guess I will speak on behalf of F9 as well. While we share your concerns about access to the site, we do not want, you know, customers or consumers coming through our active job site. But what we worked out with F9 and on the overall site plan development is with the trailer location on the far left of the screen, you know, that area we can base pave as soon as next week, and then fence that area off. So the construction fencing ran behind the trailer, which would pretty much eliminate any customers coming on to the job site. They'd be able to access it from the adjacent property, which we understand F9 properties are procuring or securing access. It's an abandoned building, but there is a parking lot there. They could access the trailer for the two months roughly that will need to complete the site project, and then the trailer could go away. We think that's the safest way for F9 to get what they want, which is to have an active sales office on-site. We can do it without disturbing our process or introducing any pedestrians to the job site. So we think the left side is the way to go if you guys could accommodate it. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity for public comment on this item. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. I mean, I'll just start off by saying, you know, without support from the various town departments, I'm not inclined to support the request. And not that I, at the risk of not being business-friendly, I got to tell you, nothing I want more than to see a business get in there, get up and running, and have their customers come to them. But I think at this level, you need to have the safety measures, and if the town departments aren't behind it, then I don't see how I could say I am behind it. So that's my position. Anyone else here on the board is welcome to theirs. Also open to the rest of the board for any other follow-up questions as they see fit. Roger?
Yes, to add to your question.
Sure.
This, the latest proposal.
The latest proposal you made about the fencing and everything?
Yeah.
Was that discussed with any department heads?
No. I mean, I think what Andy's got here on the plans is locating the trailer over there. But if we were to have, you know, it's our active job site, if we were to allow the trailer, we would only allow so with fencing. So no, I don't know if it's been discussed with any of the planned, the town departments.
Because I can appreciate the town's concern, the department head's concerns.
Sure.
But at the same time, I can see, I can empathize with the business trying to have something operating there. And I guess, does staff have any comments right now regarding the fencing? And does that change the equation from your point of view, I guess?
Yeah, it could. I think we'd have to sit down and review what that looks like. It's hard to tell without seeing it. So we haven't seen a plan like that, so at this point, I don't really have any comment.
I guess that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Roger. Anyone else? Rachel?
Yeah, the interesting thing is if what you would propose to put up was a construction trailer for the use only of the construction team, it would be okay. But once we start to look at customers coming, even by appointment, coming onto a parking lot that is not in good shape because it's under construction, I have to go along with the town departments. How far away are you proposing these, the trailers to be from the side of the, from the edge of the property?
It's just one trailer.
But in wherever it is.
On the property line.
So no buffering, just right up?
Right on the property line. We run the fencing right behind it so nobody can really come on to the active job site and segregate the people from the job site.
No, I'm sorry, that doesn't change my mind. I can't, I wouldn't want to go against the departments. I think it creates a problem to have non-construction workers wandering in.
But they wouldn't be. That would be a point of offense. At that point, it's trespassing, right?
Anyone else on the board? Rick?
Maybe there's an opportunity, I don't know, but there's a vacant building right next to it and has some parking, and I'm wondering if maybe finding out the owner of that property and making an arrangement so the trailer can go there while the site's being.
That is the parking and access we are actively, you know, pursuing. We could certainly have that discussion of locating the trailer there as well. If that would be something the board would entertain, we can go that route. If you're trying to keep the trailer on our site, but.
I would be hard-pressed to go against staff recommendations as well.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else? All right. Anyone on this board can make a motion. I don't see any interest in that right now, so.
Fair enough.
Thanks, and maybe if something else changes, you know, have a discussion of staff and maybe their opinion of the site will change as well.
Sure.
Okay. Good luck, guys. Next item on the agenda is Score Builders requests a site plan review for the Downs Innovation District assessors map U053, lot 4. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a pretty exciting moment in Scarborough. Phase two of the Downs is already under design, so that's quick-moving. So the applicant's proposing a 5,000-square-foot building that will be used to run and operate their business. The proposal is located on lot 32 within the Innovation District on the corner of Innovation Way and Center Street, as you can see there. So just a few comments. Staff would like to note that site plan approvals will not be granted until several conditions of approval for the subdivision have been approved, have been approved and reviewed and approved by the planning department. While these conditions have not been completed as of yet, the applicant is in front of the board this evening to start the site plan review process in anticipation of an approval at a later date. So the zoning standards for the Innovation District require a landscape 10-foot-wide buffer strip along the front property line where it abuts a public street. So staff has recommended some additional plantings along the Center Street frontage in order to meet the intents of the standards. Staff would also like to note that the applicant's proposing to provide 15 parking spaces instead of the required 18. The applicant has designed three future spaces in case they are warranted at a later date. So the zoning standards do allow for the board to reduce the requirements for parking where it is determined that a project can be occupied with less spaces than required. So the board should provide direction on whether the proposal can be carried on with the proposed 15 spaces. And staff also has noted that there appears to be an opportunity to provide a future connection to the abutting lot to the east of the property. This would help to minimize turning movements onto primary roads and meet the intent of the site plan standards. We, staff provided a host of review comments for your review. It's the first time you're seeing it, and we'll turn it back to you at this point.
Thanks, Jamel. The applicant would like to introduce your name and the project.
Yeah, so I'm Bonnie Wedster, architectural designer from Kevin Brown Architecture. This is a single occupant office building for a business called Score Builders that they design, write study guide materials for physical therapy exam, licensing exams. It's not a business that sees any visitors. They have four full-time employees and one to four part-time employees any day, so normally it's about six people in the office every day. And that's kind of it for the, kind of the project introduction. I know the comments are pretty long, and the landscape architects here, too, that can speak to a lot of them. So I don't know if we would just want to get into those comments?
Yeah.
Do you want to just go through them?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Seth Kimball with the CDO Landscape Architects. I realize there was a handful of landscape-related questions, some to do with plantings, connectivity with the drive, and kind of width of the drive, and also parking. Just to kind of give a brief summary of the overall design, so this is kind of a unique placement of the building in that it's kind of anchoring the corner for the public space, which includes across the street from Center Street, a couple benches, a kiosk for a bank of deliveries for like UPS, benches, and also some bike racks. Our entrance to the main building, so at the intersection of Innovation Way and Center Street, we have carried over the same language. Those benches are actually part of the overall subdivision improvements, but we've coordinated simultaneously to include the entrance that's kind of incorporated with that kind of corner of public space. We have a bank of plantings that's fairly robust along the front on Innovation Way and along the extents of Center Street. Where the plantings end, and this is related to one of the comments, is adjacent to the edge of the signage. The clients would like to kind of keep that open for that reason. We've carried it close to halfway down the building and along Innovation Way, along the full length of the building. There's street trees along there, so keeping that viewpoint from the intersection open to the signage is important to the client. As you enter the site, there's lawn area. You know, from a design standpoint, we've been trying to balance what is planted. We have a lot of meadow, natural meadow, to eliminate maintenance and lawn. I'd say there's a good balance of usable lawn space. We've created an outdoor space for employees, which is included as kind of like pea gravel, stone dust, under a canopy of larger trees along Innovation Way. There's a layering of kind of mid to high shrubs that creates a layering system as you approach the building from the parking lot, pass the lawn, and then into the employee entrance. Near the delivery area where the delivery bay is, we have a bosque or an alley of red maples. It's doing two different things. It's helping to screen the bay from the public view along Center Street and also to provide design time. The parking spaces, as Bonnie had mentioned, there's 15 parking spaces with three potential future spaces. Given that there's only a handful of employees, four to six, we tried to reduce the amount of impervious surface. As far as deliveries are concerned, we do have access to a garage bay, but the deliveries are actually by very box trucks, and the intent is to pull in, and they have a handcart that comes out that will be lifted down from a gate and brought into the bay. So there isn't a loading dock. So we try to be sensitive to the amount of impervious surface, the use of how deliveries will be taken care of. And also deliveries, just wanted to note that will only be six to 10 times a year. So it's very infrequent, and like I said, they're in the smaller box trucks in hand-carried into the bay. Is there any other specific questions the board had? If not, I can be happy to answer them.
Is that all for the team of presenters? Yes? It's okay to say yes. We can ask the questions. All right, we do have the opportunity for public comment on this. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Rachel, do you want to start this one off?
Sure. I'm excited. I think it's wonderful to see things really now starting to build. We've seen the plans, we've seen the roads, we've listened to, you know, speculation as to what things would look like as the construction got going, and I think what you're proposing is a wonderful first building to go into that area. And it is very prominent on the corner of Innovation and Center. So because it is so prominent, of course, we're going to really take a look at it because it's going to be the first thing seen. For a long time, as people come in and look and say, "Well, this is great. I'm going to try and locate over here." It sets the standard, really, for the development, and I think you've done a really good job. I had, of course, had a couple of questions, and I think one of the questions that was raised by the staff was the location of the driveway, and was there going to be enough space in between where it is currently planned on being and the driveway of the abutting lot? Have you?
Yeah, so we've intentionally located the driveway and the parking to the southern end of the property for a couple reasons. One is that the building being such a prominent location at the intersection, that putting it in the far corner and allowing kind of a layering of plantings that we've created provides screening of that parking. Secondly, the use of the business, we haven't shown a connection to the adjacent property. If I can speak to it clearly, and potentially Dan will come up and provide further clarification, is that the standards for that was set up for if there was two abutting, adjoining properties, in that the use, particularly for this client, you know, having a connection through that could potentially be for deliveries or increased use is somewhat detrimental in a way for safety, for their employees, and also from a maintenance perspective. If the adjacent property has significant If the adjacent property has significant amounts of delivery, who's taking care of the asphalt and, you know, the continued use? If it's not them that's using it. So, we provided a dead-end parking for that reason and not allowed that connectivity. And that's about it.
All right. Well, actually, that, you answered a question I didn't really ask. I understand, and I don't actually see the need for a connection to the abutting lot, but I do, you've got a driveway going in, you've got a street cut, driveway going in, and where is the potential for the driveway of the abutting property? Is there going to be adequate space? Or would it be more appropriate for you to move your driveway a little closer to the building, to your building? You're going to be a good neighbor, and there is, as the first one there, you're setting what happens to the lot next to you by your choices that you make on your driveway.
Right.
So, the question was raised about the distance between your driveway and the potential driveway on the lot next to you.
I understand. Okay. Yep. You know, from a design standpoint, it was difficult to know, like, what is happening in the future, given this is, it's the first, and, you know, the road's not there, the curb's not there, and we are setting the standard. I think we're following the limitations that, you know, that were, we have the 10-foot buffer between the properties. I think from future development, if the client wants to add on to this building, we've left that available to the northwest side. That allows for future expansion and self-ability if they decide to do so in the future. And also, being able to provide some screening between the parking and the building was also essential in providing a usable lawn area for the employees and for the business's use. So, those are kind of our reasons for putting the curb cut where it's located. I certainly understand your concerns that the southern property could have curb cut in a similar scenario. And again, it's difficult to say that, you know, we don't know where that is at this point. If they were close, if there was an existing curb cut, we may push, you know, five or 10 feet to the north, but this would be, let's say, the desired plan and a functional plan for our client.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the plantings that you have, I noticed the wildflower.
Yeah.
And I did go and take a look and see what the mix was, and it's a very appropriate mix for this area. I'm wondering how you're going to layer that area, that wildflower area, with the, is it the blueberry bushes that you have? The wild, are they just, are they going to be there, and the wildflowers going to be around them? Are they going to be set separately?
Yeah, so they're set separately. They're set in steel edging so that the meadow mix isn't going to migrate into the blueberry bushes. They're set in a four-foot-wide, essentially, container of steel edging.
But it will, the wildflower mix will grow up in between them?
Correct. Yeah, so there'll be these kind of striations of blueberry plantings, rows of blueberry plants, and then extend out into the meadow. Correct. So, there's kind of that meshing and dovetailing of those two plants.
I think that's a very imaginative way of doing it. It sounds, it looks good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Robin.
So, trying to understand the parking space issue, I think I have two questions. The first one, I'm not, do you happen to know if the three additional future parking spaces, will the stormwater management plan include consideration of those three spaces?
Yes, the stormwater plan is for the entire subdivision, and Dan, feel free to jump in if I'm speaking incorrectly.
You're doing fine.
So, anything that we do on this site has already been thought in the overall stormwater plan.
And then my other point, I guess my other question is, and I understand that, you know, you've talked with staff about, you know, your land use and what's happening here. I'm just trying to understand sort of logistically how the business works, because there's no, it says in the cover letter that it's a privately-owned company that produces education materials to assist physical therapy. So, is there production happening, or is it just sort of intellectual property that's happening, and then the production of the things that go in the warehouse are being done somewhere else?
Would you like to speak to the logistics of the business?
Yeah.
Just to give a summary of what?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why you only have, like, three to six employees, but there's all this producing going on. I love it. I want to do what you're doing.
Hi, thanks. My name is Scott Giles, and this is my wife, Tracy, and we're residents of Scarborough as well, so we're thrilled to have the potential to be part of the Downs and close to where our kids have grown up and everything else. But we've had this business for, going on almost 30 years now, and we basically have written, produced books, apps, web-based products. We go out and teach 260 or 72-day courses around the country.
With independent contractors, not the two of us.
Yeah. Good problem. For physical therapists and physical therapist assistants, and again, we've been doing this for a long time. So, what we do is we, our internal team creates products. We do have a number of employees that are consultants, hired folks that are outside of this region. Many of our 37, 38-course instructors contribute in some ways to the writing. So, we do all the design, the graphics, the layout. We work with a company out of Buffalo that does all the web-based stuff, so all the creative comes through our place, but we've done all the fulfillment ourselves. So, in other words, we get the, for instance, you know, we'll get books typically at 7,000 at a time or so. That's why it's so, that's why our deliveries are so infrequent. We just tend to have such big runs because the unit costs are so great if we go with smaller runs. And then, so we have mail, so we do, instead of dealing with a fulfillment house, we do mail fulfillment through our business. So, we're not, we don't have presses, or, you know, we don't have things like that. We deal with, we deal with McCarthy and up in Augusta. We deal with Sheridan, Donley, some of the big distributors, and we take the books, we take delivery of the books, we create them, and then they are shipped from our facilities, with UPS and postal pickup each day.
So, it's truly a large percentage of the square footage is warehouse?
About 1,800, Bonnie, of the 17 or 1,800 feet of the 5,000.
Okay, and the rest is office space, kind of thing?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's why, honestly, that's why we kind of love the thought of the Downs, because we found a lot of warehouse space when we were looking for places. We found a lot of creative space, but there was, honestly, there was not a lot of creative space that had the warehouse capability, and so that was honestly what made it such a viable alternative.
Well, you just did a great commercial for the Downs.
Oh, yeah.
Other people coming to Scarborough of your caliber, so thank you for being, thank you for answering the question so well.
And we're hopeful other creative folks like us come to the Downs, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Wow, I'm starstruck now. I don't know where I am. That's great stuff. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, it's, I myself have to put my arms around this because it is something new that's happening, kind of a thing. But in general, I think we've all got a little work to do, like, we've got to do our homework to remember what the performance standards are that apply there, but also you all do, too. I think, you know, putting the, you know, the nuts and bolts part of the site plan together is still forming, but you're doing a great job with, you know, your creativity, and I think it's really great that we're having an architect and a landscape architect in front of us type of thing, instead of just the plain old civil engineering. No offense meant to any civil engineers, but it's really nice to have a different process happening this way, so thank you all, and good luck.
Thanks, Robin.
All right. First, congratulations. I think this is a terrific first project to go in there. It really sets a standard. I think the architecture looks great, and I like the landscaping as well. I guess, just to clarify, maybe this would be a question for Dan more than you folks on that driveway. Would that, the location of this driveway, do you see this is a, Dan, this is a potential problem for the other lots along Center Street?
I don't see it as a potential problem. I think that what's going to happen is lots are going to kind of repeat themselves in terms of the pattern, because per the design guidelines, buildings aren't to be set way back from the street. There can be some parking in front, or they can be set up. I think this is a great first corner lot, set up right at the corner. So, driveways are going to be on either side of the lot. So, if you look across the street, there's a lot there, and this driveway could line up nicely with the lot across the way, where the building could be up at the other corner, potentially. And then, to the south, what could happen is the building would be closer to this driveway, and the driveway to that site could be below the building. So, I'd expect that you'd see a lot of plans like this where lots have to respond accordingly and then offset, or in some cases where necessary, shared driveway.
And if I'm not mistaken, on the other side of Innovation Way, that's going to be a private road between that lot and the next one?
Correct. That's a shared driveway that actually serves up to six lots.
Yeah, I'm talking about over this side.
Oh.
Won't there be, won't there be a, isn't there in the plans, like a shed or a private road?
There is, right. The fourth leg of that intersection.
Right over here. Yeah, right there.
Oh, okay. I believe so. I'm not entirely sure.
Won't that go up to Innovation Way, though?
I have a second question.
There you go.
So, I think maybe you're just.
Oh, okay, okay. It's over. It's over. Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, okay. That's all I have. I'm just, I think it's a great, you got a great plan there.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Yeah. I'm all done. Did you need me to say that?
Jen?
I don't have too much else to add, other than what's already been covered. As a civil engineer, I'll echo the kudos to this design team and to you as owners for seeking them out, sort of in general, but also in context of the larger sense in developing out this project. I think I certainly appreciate a very creative approach to this. What could otherwise be a very vanilla, single-story office building, you know, built out to meet all the requirements to the T, but like putting blueberry bushes near probably where your employees will have lunch, I just think is really cool. So, that's great, and, you know, any other detailed comments that I would have have really been captured well by our staff, so I would just look for those to be addressed in the next round. Yeah.
Thanks, Jen. Rick?
I don't know if colleagues picked up on this, but when you come down the road and look at that from the entrance, it's going to be really bright. You have those recessed lights underneath where the entryway is, and then on the other side at 9.9 candle watts and 6.2 one out. I think it's smart to go out on that one side because you're going to use that, it's kind of like patio or whatever. I think that's smart. It's going to be pretty bright, so I would make sure that you have some dimming controls on those because you may want to play around with that. I don't know what the glare might be as you're coming in and having that lit up like that. Just a thought.
Yeah.
And the other final thought I have is, on the roof, while it's flat, it makes a good carrier for some solar panels, and maybe some thought to not, don't have to put them on right now, but at least put a chase inside. The renewable laws are changing here in Maine, and it might be an opportunity to do some pre, you know, put a cable with a string in it, or a pipe with a string in it for later on. And on that note, if you put a rooftop unit on top of that for your makeup there, it, and I don't know if it's part of the design standards for the Downs, if those have to be hidden from view, but I would think that we might want to consider rooftop units to be somewhat decorated with a fence or something like that so that it doesn't really catch the eye. So, yeah.
Thanks, Rick. So, I'll just kind of jump on a little bit and just say, I think it's a great-looking building. You know, the fun part of being the first one in is you get the blank slate. I can understand staff's concern about position of the driveway. You know, looking at this, though, where you abut on the other side, somebody that's going to have what appears to be some private road frontage, not sure interconnectivity is appropriate in this spot, although I think, as staff has noted, you want to encourage it, especially in kind of an area this consolidated. But, you know, I see where your clientele definitely kind of wants their own little slice of heaven on that corner, and I can respect that. So, outside of that, I think I look forward to seeing this move ahead. It is exciting to see this phase start to come alive, and I think Rachel hit it on the head where, you know, you're going to be the first in, so I don't, I wouldn't say we're going to be harder on you. I think we're just, we should be very careful, you know? Because you are, you really do set the tone for, you know, what that street's going to look like, what the visual representation will be. You know, you're kind of, you know, are people going to start copying your design elements and things that, you know, we've got to be thinking about. The driveway alignment, you know, if it went five feet north, you know, yay, you know? But I don't know how much room you have to play with there. It's one of those locations, if it does line up with the, you are dictating, maybe the lot across the street from you and maybe the lot south of you. But I don't necessarily think a cascading pattern in this function would necessarily be bad for what you're looking at there, so. All right. Some of the benefits of being first in is you get to kind of pick your spot. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
It's important seeing you again.
Great, thank you.
With that, we have ended the business portion of this agenda, and we are on to a staff report.
Thank you. Let's have a few updates. We have had two pre-construction meetings since the last meeting in July. If you guys can remember, in 2018, you approved a minor parking expansion at the existing Piper Shores campus for 12 or 14 spaces. They're moving forward with that, and we did have the pre-construction meeting for the nitrogen tank at Blue Ocean Seafood over at Snow Canning Road. And then, a few other updates. The comp plan, it's still around, where staff provided an array of comments to the draft that you guys had a chance to look at, and we're waiting on those suggestions being incorporated into the final copy of the draft, and those will be in within the next few weeks, so stay tuned on that. And then, I'm sure you've noticed that Gorham Road has been reconstructed, probably, so that project is just about finished. It's in the final phases. They're about to put the finished paving, striping, and landscaping in in the next few weeks, so it's definitely a good addition to this part of town, I think. So, I think, thanks for bearing with us. It's been a long project. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jemel. Administrative amendment report.
None at this time.
Correspondence? None. Planning board comments? Yes, Robin?
I would just like to, again, say that I think our new format is really, really effective in getting so many projects reviewed in a timely manner, so I thank you, Mr. Chair. But also, I'd like to really thank the staff. With the quality of applicants and the packages that are coming in front of us has really improved as well by having people really focus on what needs to be done, so I just wanted to thank everyone for making our time here as efficient and as effective as possible.
Thanks, Robin. Any other planning board comments?
I did notice that the pre-grad classrooms have been delivered to the Five Corn School, I think it's.
Eight Corns.
Eight Corns, that's not Five Corns. I think it's some other.
Or Bedford.
Eight Corns, so that's one in. So, they did the parking lot area, so that's.
All right. Adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. Thanks, guys. That was a great meeting. So, nice job.
Well done.